Meeting in session. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So-called vote, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Benton Court?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
Ms. Olivera?
Here.
Ms. Tredup?
Here.
Mrs. Riberel?
Here.
Dr. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Ms. Pimental?
I'm here.
Reading of the notice of the meeting. This is to notify you that a regular meeting of the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee will be held on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, at 1121 Ashley Boulevard, New Bedford, Mass., at 6:00 PM in the student forum. Any public comments?
Ms. Sarah Herman is here, and also Mr. Serge Manese.
Executive session. No executive session today.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I guess I have to introduce myself. Serge Manese serves as a shopping instructor. And welcome to the new meeting number. All my children were carny kids, so... We just wanted to take a moment to thank specifically the students in the Carpentry and Electrical Programs and the leadership of Jeff Wildrick, Frank Gonsovs, and Jeremy Crowe, who support OSS and the pavilion. And I'm here with them because I'm a board member of OSS. I'm going to let Sarah tell you more about the school and the pavilion. But essentially, we had a meeting a few years ago and discussions about building the pavilion and the cost. And so, we made the connection with the outside construction team, and they supported us in completing the project. Well, it's not fully done, but most of it is complete. And OSS is an outstanding place. A lot of their students do come here. So, we've seen the results of our girls in the Greater New Bedford area receiving a top education in middle school. And we see some of those girls in middle school. We see young kids with exceptional leadership skills.
Wow. Thank you, Serge. I am so grateful to Serge for that incredible introduction. I'm just going to drop this down in a second. He made a beautiful introduction of all the pertinent details. I hope that in a moment, there'll be a picture for you to behold of the pavilion that your students and your team built at our school.
Yeah.
So, maybe that'll go up if we're lucky. But really, we're here to say thank you. The privilege of being able to have this pavilion on our campus that was built for a school by students was really meaningful to us in partnership with Volk. It was also really meaningful to us. And the idea was a beautiful one. It was exciting to watch the pavilion get built there. You can see it up.
Beautiful.
And we did send you an outline that Jill here, who's our Director of Operations, tracked as the project was completed. And the pavilion, the lights were strung just this fall. There's another portion that's going to be built on the front of the school building that's complementary to this beautiful construction that your students put together. And that will happen in the next few months. It's small in comparison, but that will bring the whole project full circle. And again, it makes us feel really happy knowing that this was built by students for students at our sister's school. And we're grateful for your partnership. And yeah, our sister's school, if you don't know of it. We do serve girls from the Greater New Bedford area in grades five, six, seven, and eight, up to 18 students per class. There are some graduates, many graduates attend Volk and even some associated with people in this room. And we're proud of our graduates and really pleased for our partnership with Volk. So, thanks. Any questions? If there are other...
Just a compliment to them getting this started. And I agree too. When students build things for the community, it's there for a very long, long, long time. And kids will come back on that looking and say, "I was part of that." So, that's awesome. And I'm proud of our sister's school. I have a niece that graduated from there, who this year graduated from Boston College.
I also had a granddaughter that graduated from there and is graduating from, this year, from San, University of San Diego. So, very good school.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have the... Reading the public comment. There we did. Reading and acceptance of the meetings of the September 9th, 2025 meeting. Committee members have received a copy of the minutes of the September 9th, 2025 meeting. Request for approval? Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Passed. Reports? Approval of the... In your backup material is a copy of warrant 26-03 and the amount of 1.4... 413-852-51 for your approval. Request approval?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Approved. Superintendent, shout out. Superintendent Watson will recognize staff for extraordinary efforts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this month, I'd like to just call, I mean, there's a lot of great work happening throughout the building, but I'd like to just highlight an email I received from one of our newer teachers kind of celebrating the work of another first-year teacher. So, this month, I want to call out Kenny Paulino, who is a brand-new instructor in the metal joining fabric shop, working with some students. And it was called out by one of our newer special educators, Juliana Viera, who is celebrating the work that he has done with some of the students in that class. And so, this is just a signal, a sign of some of the great work that's happening every day in our classrooms and also the work that our educators are doing with all students as they pursue their different exploratory backgrounds and shop selection process for all kids. So, really proud of that effort, really proud of those new teachers reaching out to share some of the great things that are happening at our school. And I want to kind of highlight that this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Student representatives, report.
Okay. So, the report this month will be brief due to the fact that our student council meeting was postponed numerous times this month. So, I don't have much to discuss with you pertaining what happens at those meetings. What I do have is our homecoming week. We have decided on a date. Our homecoming is October 25th in the Welcome Center from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Our tickets are $6 apiece, if memory serves, and they are already on sale. Our theme is the Wizard of Oz, which is something we've never done here. So, our color scheme is green, gold, ruby, red, blue, anything that really goes with that. And we have sent out forms to vote for our Homecoming King and Queen. We have 22 females running for Homecoming Queen and 18 males running for Homecoming King. And they will be announced at the football game the night before. We had our class elections and our class debate for our presidential and vice presidential candidates went very well. Everybody was very optimistic and answered their questions extremely well. The result of our class election, our president is Jordan Diaz. He is in business technology. Our vice president is Owen Figurito. He is in nursing. Our secretary is me. I'm in legal and protective services. And our Academy B representative is Anthony Alicia. He is also a classmate of mine in legal and protective services. We have one that I know of, a class representative. Her name is Adelene Perez-Rustand. She is in early childhood education. Now, I have something on my report that doesn't pertain to our school, but I think it's something that I'm doing that the committee would like to know. I will be the first Greater New Bedford Volk Tech student to represent our school at the 2025 Massachusetts Delegate Assembly Day. It is October 18th, which is this Saturday. It's at the atrium at Mass Bay Community College in Wellesley, Massachusetts. So, next month, I'll have more about what that is, what I did there. But I'm excited to, you know, represent our school at the Delegate Assembly.
Good for you.
Addison?
Congratulations, Jeff.
Good job.
Addison, report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll jump in for Mr. Wayne, who's unable to be here this evening. So, in your honor, sir, report, this is our back-to-school report for October of 2025. Notice information from both our STEM and Humanities Departments, as well as our Academy A and Academy B CTE areas kind of highlighting the work, including the work earlier tonight from our sister's school that was part of our outside construction project. So, certainly welcome to entertain any questions related to the things that are posted in there, but that's a brief summary of this month's back-to-school report.
Okay. Parent communications. Superintendent Watson will bring members up to date on the POSAP checks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again. So, you'll include, you'll notice the two-week POSAP reports that are included in your packets. Again, these are handled by our community relations folks. When these come in, any parents that have left comments or have comments to share with us, we are returning those phone calls and passing them to the appropriate departments. This is part of a comprehensive strategy that you know that we use, both POSAP reports and the platform to guide our feedback, specifically from parents and stakeholders about the work that we're doing. These are from the last few weeks.
Thank you. New business. Vote to adopt the 2025-26 weighted lottery admissions policy. Included in your backup material is a copy of the final weighted lottery admissions policy and a copy of the document showing the changes from last month's meeting.
Yes. Thank you again, Madam Chair. So, I want to call the committee members' attentions to the second document that is here. The first document, in fact, is a clean copy of the admissions policy we're requesting your approval on tonight. And I want to highlight just a few changes that we have since the last draft you saw. On the fourth page of the eligibility, we'll note the district has added the following language to its eligibility section. In addition, the district requires that all applicants demonstrate proof of residency as a condition of admission as a resident student. If district residency is not confirmed prior to the admissions lottery date, the application will be considered ineligible. And this is part of a broader effort for us to ensure that all applicants are residents in one of our three sending communities. This is a broader strategy we're employing across all four grades, but working to make sure that we implement effectively as students enter into our school. On page nine, you'll see two additional pieces. All offers of admissions will be sent to the email address that is on the application. And then, there is a paragraph listed around the waitlist duration and the change of residency forms that are listed within our policy. Those are the only recommended changes to the drafts that we've been over the last several months. And we would request favorable action on our admissions policy tonight. I also want to highlight the policy is written with 565 or so seats. But if approval happens with a new program that we've submitted applications for in construction craft labor or the development and expansion of our Business and Office Tech Program, which we expect both to happen, that number would be amended to closer to 625 students for the fall. We won't know that until that process is underway this winter. But I just want to be really clear with the public, kind of outline that. We're giving you the facts as we know them today, but want to signal where we believe we'll be in five months from now by the time this lottery is actually adopted. Executed. Thank you.
Are we going to vote on it tonight?
Yes, please. Yes.
With that expansion, came up last time, what are we going to do for the academics? Is it...
Yeah. So, it's a great point. And we are aggressively looking at a lot of options. And you'll see some of that feedback from our visits last week. And I know Wayne and Cindy will talk about the aviation piece. We do believe that we're in pretty good shape to handle the 50 or so kids for the freshman class. That becomes a little bit more of a hurdle as we grow. But we do feel pretty confident in terms of where we're at right now. We have at least two, probably four academic spaces that will be made readily available for the fall, certainly enough to handle the additional kids for the first couple of years. And then, we'll go from there. The lunchroom, we have started, is also a concern. We're looking at some new lunch tables that'll be able to sit 12 kids around rather than the eight in order to accommodate a potential increase of close to 200 students over four years. So, we're on top of that. It is a concern, and we are kind of aggressively monitoring that. So, thank you.
Make a motion that we...
Second.
All those in favor?
Can we, before we vote on...
Any discussion?
Just for discussion. I'd just be remiss if I didn't voice my opposition to the lottery in general. I didn't support it when it was one that Volk Tech had done. I certainly don't support the state-mandated portion of this lottery. I think what we've done in order to try to fix one injustice that we feel is happening, we've created another. And that's to not reward the students who have done everything that you've asked them to do, to try hard, to get good marks, to watch their discipline, to show up to school. In my opinion, 27 absences, almost 10% of the school year, is absurd. Also, for eligibility, if you look at the no suspensions or expulsions, this is for possession of a dangerous firearm or assault of an educational staff member. In order for the infractions must be a felony level, and the student must be either made an admission of guilt in court or had the case adjudicated. That makes, these are the students that we're going to put into a lottery. This makes no sense. And we've singled out a group of hard-working students who are doing everything they can to get in here, sometimes because their family member is a carpenter, plumber, whatever. And they want to follow in the family footsteps. I just think we've taken that group and we've just slighted them so badly. And if I were to vote for this policy, it would be, it would be that I endorse the policy. And I just want to make clear, in no way do I endorse this policy in any shape or form or manner because I think it's prejudiced to another group of students. And I think we've done a great injustice if we accept this. Strangely enough, when Cindy and I were up in Westfield School District, their school committee had the guts to vote this down. Now, we don't know what the ramifications will be if they don't have a policy. That's yet to be found. But I give them credit for having the backbone to stand up and say, "This isn't right." And to send it back to the state and say, "Here, you can have your policy. Let's figure out something better." But they had the guts to stand up and say, "No, because this isn't fair." So, it's not just me. And I, you know, I have people who call me all the time and say, "What are you folks doing with this admissions policy? This lottery is absurd." And I totally agree with them. And I'm glad to see that another school committee had the backbone to stand up to it. And I'm sure they're not going to be the only ones. I'm sure other school committees will stand up and say, "This is, this is not right." So, I will be a no vote. I don't think there's any surprise there. But I think the committee really needs to take a hard look before they endorse a policy like this. Make sure that you know what's in it and what you're really doing for the students who are trying hide. I don't think anybody who's a minority student can't try hide, show up to school, and stay out of trouble. I don't think that's a lot to ask of a person.
You're talking about minority students.
Thank you.
No, I'm saying, we're trying to fix a particular group of low-income or maybe minority to get them into the school. That's what it seems to be trying to fix.
I think minority students are trying to hide, and some of them are, I mean, the same. I mean...
But that's all you have to do. Try hard, show up to school. I don't think anybody...
Most of our kids do.
We're talking about disabled children as well. We're not just singling out. And for you to say minority students, that's offensive to me.
No, I'm not trying to pick out any particular group, but I think those are the different groups that we're trying to fix, that we're trying to get into the school. And I meant no, you know, no insult by that. I'm just saying, if we're trying to fix low-income, let's take that group of people. And we're trying to fix it. I don't think we're asking a lot for them to just try hard, get decent marks because the marks don't count, show up to school at least more than 27 times, is what they're asking, and stay out of trouble.
Yeah. But, I mean, there's a lot of minority students that want to be here and have all those credentials also. So, I mean, I don't understand the singling...
And I don't understand how a lottery is...
Singling out of the minorities. I just...
No, we're not, not singling out the minority group. I want to reinforce that. It's not what my intention, using that as an example of the groups that have been discussed. Low-income, minority, some of the special needs groups, those are the ones that we've been discussing.
Good point, students that are low-income as well and not hard-working. So, I think it's, you can categorize one particular group.
Okay. And I'm sure everybody has, you know, different feelings on it. This is just my particular feeling on this, this policy that I can't endorse. Mr. Shea?
As a former administrator, I agree with Wayne and where he's going. And I understand 100%. I think some of the vocational, and this is my own opinion, some of the smaller vocational schools have the ability to fight it because they're small. I don't know how big Westfield is. But, you know, when you have 100 kids, 200 kids, 300 kids, my fear, Wayne, is that we are one of the biggest vocational schools in state, over 2,000 kids. The Department of Education has handcuffed us in many ways. And sometimes, they have the stick to do that. And I'm looking at what Mr. Watson, along with Marcial, along with everybody that's sitting over here as administrators, they've spent a lot of time on this. And even though my heart is saying, "Support that," and hopefully, down the road, when things settle down, that maybe we can look at it and tweak it to encourage those things you talked about, going to school and all those things. But I would fear that, and they've done this, Department of Education, on record, has come after the school in the past and make us an example of. And I would hate to see that come on us. And I think, you know, right now, we don't have the cards to challenge it. So, I, other schools, yes. Let them go for it. And maybe we'll find out. They do nothing to those smaller schools, then we have some that we can go back and say, "Wait a minute. Time out. Just because we're big, you're going to make us do something different." So, is we're the heart that I understand. But I also think that we got to play ball with them to get this passed, to get this going, to get it done, hopefully with our own community members. And Mr. Watson and I had a conversation earlier. He feels that the relationships with Department of New Bedford for Haven in the past is good. Am I right?
Improving.
Is improving because of the fact of what he's, we need that. And once that happens, we can maybe have a discussion on how can we tweak it. But right now, I'm not going to go against them and have us use as example in the state, you know, and say, "Greater New Bedford..." I got to be careful. The word that came to my head is... "We're going to make you an example of." They're not going to make an example of Westfield. They are going to make an example of us, greater low, greater large. So, I, to Shea, on your words, I support it. But I said, "I'm going to support this because I think it's our only avenue to move forward." End of conversation.
Any other discussion?
With the wideness of the attendance policy, have we considered revising our student handbook on those two qualifying events, attendance and discipline?
The handbook in what sense, Paul?
Well, if you're out five days, you can be removed.
Yeah.
Unexcused absence, basically. I mean, if they're basically, if there's a student that's out 20 days, he's going to get a ball, right? But if he comes here and he's out 20 days, especially on the cycle, the six-day cycle in the shop, he's not going to have time to make those up. So, he's always going to be lagging behind. So, it's going to be an issue. If they're chronically absent in the handbook, in the student handbook, then there's something to hold them accountable for. And if they have a discipline issue, whether it's a equity issue, then they can be removed also.
So, we haven't had those conversations about revisions to the student handbook at this point. I did have a conversation with the dean of freshmen this morning about what we're seeing from freshmen this year, right? In terms of attendance, in terms of behavior, in terms of performance, and how that compares to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And I don't think this will be surprising to you, right? You know, we're going to look at all of those factors as it relates to performance in shops. But we've just started this process with the lottery we had last year. And I think anyone would tell you that, yeah, there's a few more discipline issues in the first month or so of the year this year than there have been in the past. But it's, it's not 100 kids out of 565, right? Are there 20 kids or 25 kids that, you know, have adjusted? Maybe. But I would prefer to answer the question this way. I would like to see what the data tells us about an entire year. I would like to see what that looks like. We are working both with the analytic folks that we have locally, as well as some national companies on data dashboards to cross-validate attendance, grades, and discipline data. And I would be much more comfortable coming back to present the findings of that six months or a year from now, preferably two to three years from now, as we will with the exploratory data, to kind of showcase what the impact of the policy change has been. I think Mr. Olivera is coming at this from a strong heart. Him and I have had a number of conversations with this. So, I'm not reading anything into the dialogue. I don't personally think Westfield will survive this big or small. This is a state regulation now. It is what it is, right? I think, I think, I think that it's going to land where it lands. And for us, I want to make sure that, I've said this out loud before, and I've told our partners, who I do think the relationships are improving it. The answer to this, this conversation started seven or eight years ago in one direction, right? It should end in another. And that is that every child in Massachusetts should have access to a free and public education of his or her choosing. That includes the expansion at wall-to-wall CTE schools. It includes the expansion of Chapter 74 programs at comprehensive schools where possible. We should be providing a free and public education to every kid. So, that's, you know, I know where we are today. It's one of the reasons why I'm recommending that our admissions policy look at 625 kids. And we're going to keep chasing new programs and additions to this building and partner with our sending districts to do that. I informed Mr. Olivera, as well as some leadership here. The town of Fairhaven has submitted a letter of intent to open an after-dark partnership with Greater New Bedford Volk Tech. We don't know about that yet either, but I think that's fantastic. And we're looking to run it in the electrical program. So, there's a lot of good things happening to make sure that kids have more access to Volk Ed in our area. And that's where I see this battle today and where we're trying to make sure that we have continued conversations with our partners on.
One more comment. Sorry, sorry. Just to go on what Paul mentioned. Many years ago, we were accused of, as a principal and superintendent, that we accept kids in, but then we throw them out if they don't do what we say. And that wasn't the case. You know, the case was that, because that's how this whole thing started, about with the mayor, who I do like, I said, you know, "You're going to have, you're a public education, so you're going to accept all kids. You can't do standards." And basically, kids left the school because they didn't want to follow the rules. And the rules were that you will stay after school, you come back on Saturday morning. We did, and that's when they left. But I was accused personally by others in the community by saying, "Well, yeah, he comes in. After a month, you don't like him? You know, doesn't do what you say? You throw him back to the cities or towns." That was not the case. And really, you're one of the... The defendant. We said, "No, they will get suspended. I'm not going to get suspended." Then, you go back to your center school. But they decided to leave because they wouldn't follow the rules. So, I think what we have to do, I like the way you go, that, that not only means let's get more interaction and more, you know, involvement with it, but we can't just send them back because they're not over, because that's 1980, 80, you know? And we got hammered for that.
Yeah.
And I used to say, "We didn't throw the kid out. He didn't want to stay here because he or she weren't following the rules."
Exactly.
So, I think we have to be careful that how we handle it, but we have to have more intervention. So, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Am I making it confusing?
No. And I agree with everything you're saying. There are...
The, the other thing is, in those days, you know, go back, we didn't have the services that we have now for kids.
Right.
They were not available. There wasn't all these other services that are there to help these kids, a kid that doesn't come to school. Because a lot of times, we don't know the reason why these kids aren't coming to school every day. There's a lot of extenuating circumstances in their homes and whatever. But now we have programs in place, we have people in place, um, to assist those kids. So I don't see that as being as much of a problem as we did back 20 years ago, maybe, or 30 years ago when, when that was going on. But Mr. Shea's correct. Um, we were accused all the time of sending kids back, "Oh, you don't, they don't do what you want, you just send them back and you have no consequences." That was not the case. I can attest to that. But I, the difference now is, those same kids now have services available to them that, that weren't available back then as well.
I want to just add in for your benefit as well, again, Shea, this, I've directed the team, I want to know why kids are leaving the district, right? So, uh, we have a process. Uh, it's been a long time of, of a paper process. Uh, we have it for staff as well. So I just want to inform the committee and the public at large, is I've directed the team to engage in an electronic system through our Thought Exchange platform that will literally use the intelligence factors available to us to summarize, uh, those reasons, right? Because right now, if I were to walk into the Human Resources office and ask why the last 25 folks have left the district, and some of you folks have asked me those questions, I would need to dissect individual papers. Uh, if I asked why the last 100 kids in the last five years didn't get their shop, or whatever the reason was, we would have a process through the paper. So, this summer, I directed the team, and I fall through to the point where they're not all thrilled with me at times, but we're going to move that to an electronic system that is ever-changing and ever-capsulating new information to build a profile, so that a year from now, if asked why the last 50 kids left the district, I can provide you with a summary of the reasons why that is the case. Same with staff, over five years, those numbers might be in the hundreds, but it will begin to paint a picture of the, what we think. Why is it that kids come and then leave? Why is it that staff take different positions? We need to know those answers in order to make the kind of data-informed decisions to improve practice. Uh, so I just want to let the community know, and you folks know, that we're launching a new approach to that this year, which I expect, uh, will be up and running shortly, uh, because we need to begin to collect that data in a real usable way, that it's available at the fingertips of a computer. So, hopefully that will address some of those questions that are being raised here.
And I like the staff part of it, too, because we want to keep staff, and, yeah, we have seen some have left, and they have personal reasons, but it'd be nice to know if they are personal or whatever.
That's right.
So, I think you're on the right track of getting that data, and hopefully we stay out of the, uh...
It's just a shift of mindset. We're doing it already, but I don't, I don't want to go through 75 sheets of paper to try to figure out what the common theme is, right? The technology that's available today in the world will do it for us, and we'll have it in a much quicker time to be able to assess. The same thing that Mr. Olivera started this conversation with. What is the impact of student attendance on performance in CTE areas? The intelligence will do that for us once I get our systems in place, and we're beginning to move down that path as well.
And we all know the way out of poverty is education. And for some of our kids, at the end of four years that are comprehensive high school, they have nothing but a piece of paper. At vocational school, they have a trade, immediately marketable, they can go out into the workforce. So I think, you know, that's a huge impact for this community.
Just one discussion?
Just one question on clarification. Um, on the admissions, um, number one, it says that obviously if we get more seats, or more applications than we have seats, combination of a lottery and a selective criteria will determine which students will be admitted?
Right, so it's basically identifying the selective criteria, the ones you mentioned, the 27 absences in the, uh, discipline tracks of the...
Selective criteria to be in the lottery.
That's correct. It, under the state regulations, yes.
I didn't know if that was one in the same, or if that was a separate...
No, 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 that's the same thing. And I can tell you, we already have more applicants than seats are available for the class of 2030. We're just over that now. I want to say it's like 570, something, or 600. It just crossed that number, so.
Need more discussion? Ever and none?
Has there been a motion?
There's been a motion, a second.
Mr. Berrill made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I think it was seconded.
I think we seconded it already, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Ever and none? Pass. Vote to approve the competency determination for the classes of 2026 and 27, including their backup materials, a copy of the competency, competency determination for the classes of 2026 and 2027.
We're going to hand that off to our academic director, Carmen Amor.
Is that an option pitch?
That's a quick pitch.
So, after the repeal of MCAS as a CD requirement last December, we adopted an interim CD for the class of 2025, and in the absence of a DSE or state mandate, we do need to have one for the classes of 2026 and beyond. So, a group of us sat together, reviewed this with department heads, folks in guidance, special ed department, um, to look this over, to ensure that we are meeting the state mandates for this, and that it is not in conflict with our local graduation requirements. So in order for students to earn a diploma from Greater New Bedford Voc Tech, they'd have to meet all the local graduation requirements, in addition to the CD requirements outlined in the handout. And these are aligned with the coursework and the standards that were tested on MCAS. So the two requirements were successful completion of coursework and demonstrating mastery. So we've defined successful completion of coursework as a final grade in the course in accordance with our grading policy, so 65% or better, a student has successfully completed the course. Mastery is a passing grade, 65% or better, on the final assessment for that course. And of course, our coursework, our assessments are aligned with grade level standards. And all students are entitled to a free and public education, so we'll continue to ensure that every student is receiving the special ed and English language support that they require, just as they have been for the MCAS. Um, and some students weren't successful immediately on MCAS, they needed a little more time. We've built that in here as well. Students can attend summer school for support on either, um, mastery of coursework or successful mastery on that final exam. We want to make sure that students continue to have an opportunity to meet both the CD and the graduation requirements. So, that is English 9 and 10, or ESL 9 and 10, which counts as an English class, the way our curriculum is written for our English learners. It is Algebra I and Geometry, and six credits in Science. Right now, students take six credits of Biology, but it can be in any of the MCAS-tested subjects. Also a requirement for class of 2027 and beyond, demonstrate mastery in U.S. history. So we have, um, three credits in U.S. history. Again, successful, successful completion of coursework and demonstrating mastery with, um, successful passing of the final assessment for the course, whatever that may be.
I had to say a quick one. Is that the, all the credits that are required, or there are additional elective credits and phys ed and all of those, too?
That's just for the CD.
Just academic.
In addition to all of the graduation requirements, as they have been in our, um, in our handbook. So, the vocational credits, attendance requirements, all those things still stand.
Great. Thank you, Carmen.
This basically replaces the MCAS component of the competency determination, but the local graduation requirements are unchanged in the handbook.
Both classifieds.
Is this a question, is this like MCAS light or MCAS heavy? You know, our staff was taught basically what to prepare for the MCAS test. Are they giving us data or information, what to teach, so that the competency test, they would include in their teaching? How is our staff know what the competency test is going to be?
Well, all our curriculum, our curriculum documents, our assessments are aligned to the curriculum frameworks, grade level that are tested on MCAS. So, when we certify this coursework, which really is just us reviewing it to ensure everything is aligned, that it matches up with what the state is telling us, those curriculum documents, the curriculum frameworks are telling us, we need to be teaching, that students need to be proficient in, by the end of Algebra I, Geometry, English 9, and English 10. So there isn't...
Basically, we know what we have been doing.
Yes.
And just, not, the word MCAS is out, and the determination's in, it's the same thing.
Right, right, and there isn't a test that's sent down by the state that we lock the school down for two days. Yeah.
This is, uh, so just, it's a great question, Mr. Shea, and kind of a foreshadow of what's to come. This is an interim step, uh, while the Governor's Council is working on new competency determination language. And we're not quite prepared to, to share that tonight, although I have seen an initial draft of those recommendations from the committee that's chaired by Secretary Tutwiler and Commissioner Martinez. So, it is coming out, and I think more clarity, uh, in the spring, for, winter to spring, around that issue about what the state plans to do for the class of 2028 and beyond. Uh, so this is an interim step that all school districts are required to take by December 31st of 2025, to have their own competency determination locally for the classes of 2026 and 2027. But there is additional guidance coming from the state around what will replace the MCAS. And there is a much more stringent plan in the works compared to this.
And this document does indicate under, um, Part II Competency Determination, that if DSE or the state articulates requirements for a CD, a student must pass any state-required assessments, projects, or expectations as applicable. And if they defer the CD to the district, this is what we would call, so this, for those few years.
More discussion, questions? Thank you very much. Do we have to take a vote?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ever and none? Passes. A vote to change the date, 2026 graduation, the change in Skills USA dates, excuse me, for this year. We recommend moving the 2026 graduation to Friday, May 29th, from June 5th. Copies of the school calendars are attached for reference.
Just briefly, uh, Skills USA has been moved up this year due to, uh, the World Cup being held in Atlanta at the end of that month, so it is the week of June 1st, the 5th. Uh, while there's no way for us to know if any of our students will participate in the Nationals, several have before, uh, and it's concerning enough to many of us in the vocational technical schools that we should move our graduation date out of an abundance of caution so that our students are not, um, forced to choose between graduation or skills. So my recommendation is that we move the graduation to Friday, May 29th.
Take a vote?
Make a motion that we change graduation to May 29th, 2026.
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ever and none? Passes. Update of Aviation Program Exploration Committee. Superintendent Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn the lion's share of this time over to Dr. Marlin and Mr. Olivera, uh, who joined, uh, Mr. Pius and Mr. Aruda and myself last week on a tour of two aviation programs across the state at Greater Lawrence, aviation program this year, and then at Westfield Tech, who is in their 10th or 11th year now of, of running that program. I wanted them to have the ability to discuss what they saw with, with their fellow members tonight, and to let you all know that a complete, um, report on that, uh, those days that we were out visiting those schools will be available in your November 10th packet.
So, um, we all went as a team, and, uh, it was quite impressive to see where the first school was, the school that's just kind of starting up, and, um, where the other school has been for a while. It was, it was, kind of, took me back a little bit when we saw how much, um, uh, Greater Lawrence was spending on some of the building, construction. But I was happy to see that the next day, when we went to an established program, that they were able to work with what they already had. In fact, taking a building that was from 1910, revising it, and, um, kind of moving forward. So, um, that was the most impressive thing. I just think also, and you'll see some of the pictures that we've taken, um, next time we have a meeting, just the amount of engagement by the students, um, very serious about this program, and how enthusiastic they were about the possibility of working as a, uh, aviation mechanic, and just the potential of the program. I was very, very excited about, obviously, this has to go through a process, and, um, there are, there's a lot of work that has to be done before we really move forward, but I think all in all, that, you know, my recommendation at this very time would be that we just keep moving forward and investigating, um, what's available. We, uh, we also still do have partners from the airport, and, um, Mike Arugio was very kind to come with us, and, um, he's had, he's had some reflection, which we'll discuss next time, um, that it is something that this school could do. It is something that we could do within a, a budget. So, Wayne, what do you think?
Yeah, excuse me, and, yeah, not to repeat anything that Cindy said, because I do agree with all of that. We had a very good visit. It was interesting to see, uh, Greater Lawrence, who had an abundance of space, and had a brand-new hangar. And then we went to Westfield, who had limited space, but two seems like are going to be great programs with a lot of interest. And I would have to say, even with that brand-new hangar, um, that was gorgeous, I kind of liked the, the old hangar at the airport, which had an abundance of space, but it had the character of, um, you know, of just a, a working hangar, and I, I think I appreciated that one more than seeing the brand-new, uh, hangar that hasn't even been used yet. So, um, you know, we get to see both ends of the spectrum, and it definitely is doable. Uh, the energy from the students was there, and when you talk to the students, they were so excited about what they were doing, uh, you know, you asked them, "How, you know, what do you think of the program? This is great, it's wonderful." They couldn't, didn't have enough good things to say about it. So, um, you know, I think exploring this is the right path at this point, and, yeah, we'll give you some more information, uh, next month. But, um, you know, just to be clear also, this is an aviation mechanic program, because I've had a few people ask me, "Why are we trying to teach students to fly?"
That's my question.
Yeah, we're, we're, this is not a pilot program, this is a aviation mechanic program, so let's be clear with that right off the, right off the ground, okay? Yeah, I know, it was a little pun there. But, um, yeah, just a, a really good, well-worth, worthy visit, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seems like, too, that, uh, the two schools are willing to help us so that we won't have to rewrite a lot of the curriculum and the path that the program might possibly go, but there are people that we can reach out to that will be of assistance, so we won't be going in there cold. Um, no, it was just, it was amazing, and it was amazing to see how, how really focused these students were, and very serious, like, when I went up to them originally and said, "So, hey, tell me about this program. What do you think about this program?" They're like, "Uh, excuse me?" Uh, you know, trying to take them away from what they were, the work that they were on, you know? But they were, and obviously, they hadn't been prompted, they, they would answer the question, and, um, they're all in, in some kind of uniform of sorts, they're all very proud of themselves, and, you know, just carrying themselves like they really were.
They were vetting you before they answered the question? To know who you were and...
That's right.
Presenting before they answered the question.
They, they, I didn't have my badge on, you did, so. Oh, wow, yeah, it was, it was wonderful.
Exciting.
Good. Just a quick question, and it's naive, I, we have automotive, we have diesel, and now aviation mechanic. So is that, they're all three separate areas, or does it cross over with diesel? I mean...
Yeah, and that, that's a good point, because I think both Cindy and I went in there with the question about that, and I think there's, there is a lot of separation, um, because you're going to do, um, where they refer to, obviously, mechanics, um, the mechanics of the engine, but also aircraft, uh, structure. So there's a whole lot of different areas. I don't know if you could even, you know, start them off in a, say, a gas engine program, you know?
It was a really kind of...
For the basic basics, but as a freshman, there's a, a whole criteria, um...
So it's mechanical, or the engines, and the flight, and all that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I was...
Structure of the aircraft, and, and things like that, um, and, because... And, because they even made the point, like, if you're a freshman and you miss a good portion of that program, they have to leave it blank because you can't start over. They couldn't bring somebody in halfway through the year and expect them to catch up. So it's a lot of criteria that you have to meet. And yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, but that's, that's a question we went in with.
Okay.
There's a, there's a road ahead, right? So we'll do the report in November. And I think we got, we want to keep talking about this. This program is different in the sense that the FAA is highly involved.
Right.
So it's not like a lot of the other Chapter 74 programs. Mr. Olivera makes a great point. Like, I don't know how this flushes out in the conversation of admissions, right? You can't be absent 20 days. You won't, you won't make it through the program. So what does that look like in a high school? Westfield was 10 years ago, under a different situation than what Lawrence is operating. And Lawrence is just starting. So we don't know necessarily how that plays out. Both schools told us, and although Dr. Marlin is correct, will probably be a little bit better because they're going to share materials with us. But you're looking at a four-year kind of runway before you get this.
Runway? Runway?
Figuring out- Just making sure everybody's still paying attention, so.
Yeah, get on to me.
I just, I just want to say-
We planned that last week.
Yeah, we need it. The way things are going right now.
Down thing, right? Up and down? Yes, okay, I got it.
You know, so I, we'll talk more about it next month, but I just kind of want to make sure folks understand. I think the next big decision will be, as we approach the budget season, where we are in this process, whether we're ready or not ready this year. But we need to probably be moving in that direction. It is a multi-year arc to get this program off the ground. And also, the question about space. Because we will need to identify some number of square footage within the, the building. And that includes if we're able to negotiate something with the city around the hangar that's down there. So there's a lot of political work, as well as work within our existing structure that we have to. We'll talk more about that. That will be included in the report next month.
Thank you.
Back.
Any more questions? Nope? Okay. Moving along. We vote to adopt the following policies. Included in your backup material are copies of the policies to be adopted.
Make a motion to take them all in one vote.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Have to have a motion to. Somebody, make a motion to?
We did.
We did it all in one?
No.
This is all in one? Okay, right. Okay. Vote to approve out-of-state travel for students, athletics. Brian Mathia is requesting approval for out-of-state travel for the following. Winter track Providence, Korea, and Tech in January of 2026. Spring track, White Plains, New York for Lox Games in May of 2026. Boys volleyball, URI for roadie invitational in April of 2026. Yo, Ryan?
All those trips are reoccurring. We've made those trips just about annually. The only one, White Plains, New York, we did not travel to last year. That was a financial issue. The, the cost is just really starting to go up. So we've decided to go every other year, the track. But in terms of the invitational at the Providence, Korea, and Tech, and the roadie for boys volleyball, we've traveled there just about annually. And athletic director. I don't know if anyone has any questions on those events?
Let's get, go on. I make a motion to approve all three.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Questions approved.
Easy, easy, Ryan.
I've sat here all this time.
We have another one coming.
Anything else?
Well, no, just the school trip.
We can take that one. I don't know. Yeah, letter J, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Vote to approve out-of-country travel for the Travel Club?
Yeah, that's under student activities.
So this year's trip, the advisors have decided on a trip to Lisbon, Seville, and Madrid. They're looking for approval for. Little change to our last trip, which happened, I believe, during April vacation. This one would be after the school year. It'd be June 18th to the 26th. That'll be a nine-day trip. The cost of it would be about $4,200 per student, a little over $5,000 per adult. We have Cassandra Alves is our, our advisor. Kelly Haggerty and David Von Alves, who went on the trip to Portugal last year, have agreed to go on that trip as well. Cassandra would not be traveling. She has a young family at home, so she's not quite ready to leave for an extended period of time. But after talking to Kelly and Dave, EF Tours, where is it?
Can we use them again?
Yep, yeah, we use them for Portugal. They have a student-to-staff ratio of 6 to 1. So we would probably need to look for another advisor or two, depending on how many students we have. We won't have that number until after the trip.
We're all Marlin's-
We're here, we're Marlin's.
That's the trip we have planned, that we're hoping to get approval for so we can start the process of vetting student interest and finalizing all the plans that are already in place.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions of approval?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Request approved.
They dropped last year.
Yeah, yeah, it went well.
This is, I like it because it's, it's out.
Yeah, great.
Yeah. So there'll be no time missed. There was no time missed in April either, but yeah, so. I won't be going. I went to Florida about six, seven years ago with volleyball. That was enough for me, but. Country is a-
That's it.
Possibility.
You'll be on duty the whole time.
I wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
IG. Yep. Vote to approve out-of-state travel for automotive tech and diesel tech students. Serge, what happened to Serge? Is this approved? Serge is requesting approval for out-of-state travel for the automotive and diesel tech students to travel to New England Institute of Technology in East Greenwich on October 16th and November 13th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Request is approved. Okay. Vote to approve out-of-state for marine tech students. Michael McConnell is requesting approval for the marine tech students to travel to safe harbors marinas in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, on a date to be determined. Request for approval?
All right, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Request approved. Vote to approve out-of-state travel for design and visual communication students? I think I want to go on this one. Included in your backup materials is a copy of the request for the design and visual communication students to travel to ABC Disney Studios in New York on November 5th, 2025. It's, looks like a really nice trip.
I'll make that.
They're going to see live shows and-
Oh, looks great. I'll make that motion.
We might be able to fly you in.
There you go.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Request approved. I do want to go on that one.
Chair?
So who are the instructors that are involved with this?
On the visual trip? No, Kathy's going. I don't know. Maria, do we know who that, who it is?
Wait a minute.
No, I don't think that we know which instructors are going with the kids.
Yeah.
I believe it's Ms. Gaspar. It's got to be media that's, that's going that, that way. But I do not know exactly which instructors are going.
I don't see.
Who's going? You'll be all set.
Vote to designate equipment as surplus.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Request approved. Report on, report on personal appointments, retirement or resignations to be received and placed on file. Early notifications of retirement. One, Michael Nelson, effective July 7th, 2026. Mark Waters, effective October 1st, 2026. Notice of resignation, Ursula Crowell, effective October 17th, 2025.
Make a motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
In favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Request approved. Okay, communications. Advisory dinner meeting, October 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM. ACTE best practices, conference feedback. Free leadership network for women conference feedback.
Make the motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Yes?
All right. I just have, I just want a comment. That's all on this. I think it was very good. I liked the presentation that they did on the leadership conference. And it was really good. It was very informative. And I liked the layout of how, I guess, I asked them already how they liked it, and they said they really enjoyed it. But it was nice getting that feedback from them to see how, how they liked the conference as a whole.
Yeah, no, I, I'm glad that they enjoyed themselves. I've spoken with all of them. DA is a new group, national group that runs a, a, a women's leadership conference for senior executives. It is within school districts, as well as several summits throughout the year. Worked with them in the springtime. And this was our first venue into that space. And I think Pam, Erin, and Yolanda did a great job on the write-up as well to kind of give us. So we're going to continue that this year, just so folks know you're seeing the first ones. But as, as we move through different events, we'll be providing written summaries of all conferences that staff members attend to the school committee so you're aware of what the takeaways are in every one of those endeavors.
It was very interesting. I liked that. It was a good idea.
They go to the same event every year. We always hang out together.